Welcome to the 2017 Hudson School District School Board Candidate Forum sponsored by the River Channel. I'm John Knudsen and I'll be your moderator tonight, asking the candidates questions, so you can help formulate your plan to vote on Tuesday, April 4th. We have three candidates running for two seats available. We have Carrie Whitaker tonight, who is an incumbent. We also have with us tonight Heather Logelin, who you'll meet shortly. And the third candidate was unable to meet tonight due to work commitments, and that is Marion Shaw. We will try to get the questions to Marion, so his answers can be given to the Hudson Star Observer and published with the answers that Carrie and Heather provide tonight. That way voters can have all answers from the three candidates before you decide on who you would like to vote for. We'd like to thank John Russett, who's here tonight. John's the editor of the Hudson Star Observer, and he will be recording the answers tonight and publishing them in one of the next editions of the Hudson Star Observer. Let's meet our two candidates here tonight and get things rolling. And we're going to start with Heather Logelin. Heather, if you could give us two minutes to tell us about yourself, your family, your work, interests, and then also your motivations for running for the school board.
Great, thank you, John, and thanks to everyone who's watching at home. Thanks also to River Channel for making forums like this available to folks in our community. It's a really valuable service, and we appreciate it. I am very excited to be running for school board. I am a strong supporter of public schools. I think they are foundational for a strong community. They attract families, they attract workers, and they attract businesses to our community. So, a bit about me. I grew up in a small town in southern Minnesota. My parents are both retired public school teachers. I attended a Catholic grade school and a public junior and senior high school. It was a small town, so I had the opportunity to be involved in athletics, arts, academics, of course, other activities. I have a bachelor's degree in psychology and an MBA from the University of St. Thomas with an emphasis in nonprofit management. I've been working in healthcare administration for more than 20 years, and I serve on numerous local boards and committees. I also co-lead a Girl Scout troop, so this is a very busy time of year. Thank you to all of you for supporting the Girl Scouts with your cookie purchases. My husband and I moved our family from St. Paul to Hudson in 2004, in large part because of its strong schools. In full disclosure, it was also probably because my husband is a native of Oshkosh, and he wanted to get us back on the right side of the St. Croix River. I do recognize that serving on the school board is a significant commitment, and I want voters to know that I take that commitment very seriously. Since deciding to run, I've put a lot of time into learning even more about the role. I've attended every school board meeting and work session. I've talked with a lot of district families, teachers, administrators, elected officials, and other community members, and done a lot of reading. There's a lot to learn, but there are also great resources, like the Wisconsin Association of School Boards and the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. I'm excited about this opportunity to learn and grow as I serve our community, and I hope those watching will give me a chance to do so by voting for me on April 4th.
Well, thanks very much, Heather. Next up is Carrie Whitaker, who's our incumbent. Carrie's running for reelection to the school board. If you can provide your introductory remarks and motivations on why you'd like to be a school board member, we'd like to hear from you now.
Thank you, John. I was born and raised in Des Moines, Iowa, where I attended school. Got my bachelor's degree from Simpson College in business management. Though I attended Simpson College, I am a Cyclone, Iowa State Cyclone fan, rooting for them tonight. My husband and I have two children, Maggie and Ellie. We moved to the Hudson community in 2003. They attended St. Patrick's School, graduated from Hudson High School. Today Maggie is a world history teacher in Denver, Colorado. Ellie will be graduating from St. Thomas University this spring, so we're excited about that. I am very appreciative to the Hudson community for electing me three years ago to the Hudson School Board. We have great schools in our community, and I am very appreciative to have had the opportunity and would like to be a part of continuing with our outstanding students, teachers, staff, administration. It's a very positive environment, and I'd like to be a part of that going forward. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Carrie. It's great learning something about both of you. Let's get started with the meat and potatoes of this forum. Our questions have been submitted by members of the community. You will each get one minute to respond to each question, and after each question has been answered by both, you'll receive another 30 seconds to provide either a rebuttal to something that's been said or additional information that you'd like to get across to the viewers. So, our first three questions deal with roles and responsibilities, and we're going to start first with Carrie Whitaker here. Carrie, the first question is, how do you envision your role and what would you say are your responsibilities as a school board member?
Supporting teachers, students, staff, and administration. Period.
Okay, very good. Short and succinct, I like that. Heather, you'll get the same question. How do you envision your role and what would you like to say are your responsibilities as a school board member if you are elected?
When I think about the roles of a school board, I think there are a couple of key things. A school board really needs to help set the vision for the school district, working with the community to define that vision. We have a vision for Hudson, the 2025 vision. So, setting that vision, looking at school policies, and making sure that school policies are such that they support that vision and enable administrators and staff to do the work they need to do to carry out the work plan that is developed to support that vision. There's an accountability function, so a lot of what school boards are doing is looking at reports, so looking at quantified data, and also quality data, so more of the stories, and asking good questions. And then I think there's a really important role with community engagement. School board members have to be a liaison between the district and the community and make sure that the district is being responsive to the needs of the community.
Terrific. Thanks for your answer. Carrie, you would have 30 seconds if you'd like to add anything or expound on anything else?
No, I think that's a great answer, and I fully agree.
Terrific. Heather, anything more from your end?
No, thanks.
Okay. Heather, you get the next question, and has a more specific follow-up on the previous question. Do you feel your responsibilities as a school board member lie more at the macro level of managing and supervising the superintendent and his staff, or at the macro level of leading through policy and decision-making for the school district? And Heather, we'll start with you.
Sure, sure. Thanks, John. Well, definitely the latter. Yes, there is a staff management function in that the school board does have the hire-and-fire authority for the superintendent, but that's where it ends. I mean, the superintendent is in charge of managing the district, managing the school leaders, who then manage their staff. So, I think that, again, the board's focus needs to be on the policy, vision, accountability, and community engagement roles.
Terrific, thank you. Carrie, same question. Would you like me to repeat it, or are you?
No, I agree that the role is not to manage staff and the superintendent. It is strictly to hire the superintendent. The superintendent is solely accountable to the school board, but that is where our staff supervision ends. So, I think it is more of the vision and oversight with policies.
Terrific, okay. Anything else either of you would like to add? Or we'll get to the next question, which will go to Carrie starting. Carrie, describe a situation in which you led a group with opposing or differing views and ultimately achieved consensus to move forward.
Well, I don't know about leading a group. Certainly, as part of the school board, it's often a consensus decision rather than a unanimous decision. There's often debate about issues, sometimes rather heated, but we all have to agree to move forward. So, that does happen frequently. Another aspect, I guess, that I participated in probably, I guess, four years ago now, my husband and I were co-chairs of a capital campaign, which is never fun to ask for money, but we did raise, our St. Patrick's community raised over $2 million, so it was successful in that sense, and actually a great community builder.
Very good.
Yeah. So, John, recently, through my work, so as a senior leader at a local hospital, one of our responsibilities every three years is to work with the community to assess needs and then figure out how, as a not-for-profit hospital, we respond to them. This last time around, we were able to bring together leaders from the four hospitals in our two-county region and the two public health departments, under the umbrella of Healthier Together, to come up with that plan collectively. Obviously, when you bring different hospitals together, who are parts of different health systems, public health departments, community organizations, folks are all there for the same reason, but they have their own interests at the table. And so, I think really key to that was getting folks on the same page about why we were there, what our shared interest was, and to really clearly define a process for decision-making. As a result of that rather lengthy process of extensive community engagement, we now have a shared work plan for the next three years to work on shared issues around mental health, alcohol abuse, and obesity, overweight. So, that was, being part of that process and being able to help drive it was a really rewarding experience.
Terrific. Do either of you have anything more to add for roles and responsibilities as a potential school board member? Good to go? All right, very good. Our next set of questions has to do with students, teachers, and administration. And Heather, you'll start. The first question is, what are your thoughts regarding the integration of private and charter school and home-school students into the Hudson School District, specifically with regard to transportation, athletics, and any or all other opportunities?
Well, that's a tough question, John, and I will admit one where I probably don't have enough knowledge about how things are working in our district to give a really thorough answer. I will say I've had the opportunity to see, both through my experience growing up in a small town in southern Minnesota where we had an early charter school focused on environmental science, and more recently in River Falls, where the Renaissance Academy is doing a great job meeting the needs of students for whom, for whatever reason, the public school environment wasn't a good fit, schools from throughout the whole region. So, while I think that we need to continue to work to make our public schools, through innovation, through responsiveness, work for as many kids as possible, I think we also have an obligation to look at innovative approaches and to work with those families who choose homeschooling for their kids.
Terrific. And I know it's a long question, so Carrie, I'll repeat this for you. What are your thoughts regarding the integration of private and charter school and home-school students into the Hudson School District, specifically with regard to transportation, athletics, and any and all other opportunities?
Well, I have to admit, I honestly don't know how the transportation component works with our current home-school students. I believe they are fully welcome to participate in athletics and any clubs that may be available, though I can't swear to that. We don't have charter schools. We do have two faith-based schools in our community that go through, I know St. Patrick's goes through eighth grade. I don't know if Trinity offers, I think they only offer through eighth grade as well. And I believe with, like, football and cross-country or track, they are allowed to participate in those sports. They handle transportation on their own. They don't get bused for that, which I would agree that they, we shouldn't extend busing to them to get to the middle school, but then I think they are part of the team and can get to whatever games or events.
Very good, thank you. Carrie, we'll start with you with the next question, submitted by viewer or for community members. How many hours of daily homework should Hudson High School students have?
That is not something that any community member should be determining. That's a student. It's completely dependent on any student, the schedule they select, what they're capable of doing, any outside activities that they have, which should be determined when they're making their schedule. They could have four AP classes, and they could have quite a bit of homework a night, or not so much. And that's completely dependent on the student and the teachers assigning it.
Very good, thanks. Heather, how about you? How many hours of daily homework should a Hudson High School student have?
Well, if you asked my eighth-grade son, as he's getting ready for ninth grade next year, I think I know what his answer would be, but let's leave that aside. You know, I realize hours is a relevant question because there are only so many hours in a day, and kids have other things to do. That said, I'm not sure hours is the right measure, because you could give kids a lot of homework that isn't very meaningful. And so, I think the focus really needs to be on meaningful homework, and, you know, as Carrie indicated, of course, it's going to be driven by classes that students are taking, but I think that that's something that kids need to determine when they're choosing classes and make sure that they've got a schedule that's going to accommodate all the things that they're signing up for. A lot of our kids balance work as well, work, sports, and academics. So, I realize time is limited, and I think we need to leave that to the discretion of the kids' families, their families, and the teachers.
Very good, thanks very much. Heather, we'll start with you with the next question. How would you handle teacher discipline when there is a complaint of wrongdoing?
Well, I would not. I think, I can see where this is probably a challenging position for school board members, because I imagine that they do often hear directly from parents who have complaints about how things are going in schools. That said, teacher discipline shouldn't be, what, the school board is dealing with? That should be dealt with by their either immediate supervisor as a principal or the superintendent. I imagine there might be cases where there's a potentially controversial or a case with legal considerations that the superintendent would bring to the board for awareness, probably, but unless I'm misunderstanding the role of the board, I don't believe that's something that the school board would be involved with.
All right. Carrie, same question. How would you handle teacher discipline when there's a complaint of wrongdoing?
Well, I would completely agree. It's something that the building principal would first handle, then likely human resources could potentially even end up with the superintendent. The only time that the school board would hear about it, you might hear initial details if it's appearing to be a growing concern, but we would get limited information in case it did reach a legal position that we would need to hear an appeal. So, we wouldn't want to be biased by hearing details of that before.
This is a very specific question, and maybe you've answered this already with the answers you just gave, but the specific question is, should a student be expelled for bringing a knife to school? And Carrie, we'll let you answer that one first, and...
That would be dependent on the specific circumstances surrounding that incident, and also that particular student's past behavior and potential infractions that he or she may have committed.
Okay. Heather, your answer?
Yeah, I will admit to not knowing what our district's policy is around weapons and whether we have what I think is sometimes referred to as a zero-tolerance policy around weapons. I think, you know, the challenge with zero-tolerance policies is they don't leave room for common sense. I remember hearing once about, I think it was, maybe even in Minnesota, an elementary school student who was suspended because she brought a knife to school in her lunch to cut a peach at lunch. And so, I think there has to be room for common sense there. My assumption is that the policy around weapons in schools is something that the board reviews regularly and helps provide a framework for administrators who can then make decisions in those situations.
Very good. And these questions, again, are coming from the general public. Some of them are not as clearly defined as they maybe need to be, but I think we'd probably all agree too, with a birthday knife to cut a cake or something like that, there's got to be a little bit of understanding there and common sense used. But Carrie, another comment?
Well, if I could offer a follow-up, I will say that our administration has a very thorough plan in place with hearings, pre-expulsion hearings, and it's a very long process before it would get to an expulsion hearing, in most cases. Obviously, a very serious offense would probably immediately go to expulsion hearing, but fortunately, I've only had to sit in on one of those.
That's good. Okay, Heather, next question is, would you please discuss your view of school administration and what role they play, and how do you think they contribute to an education?
So, I think we alluded to this a little bit in our answer earlier to the question about the role of a school board, but school administration, obviously, the superintendent is charged with having oversight of the entire district. So, really, kind of the district climate, management of the whole district, finances of the whole district. And by hiring good people, both as school principals and as leads of departments for the district, then those administrators, those building principals are really charged with, I think in a school environment, the principal really sets culture for that school. So, the school climate, has oversight for instruction at that school, deals with HR issues, with the support of the district HR staff. So, really is running that small, it's a small business, if you will, that school within the larger district. I think that it's really important that those administrators then, yes, our leaders also have great people skills, that they are both good listeners and good communicators, that they're good problem solvers. They have to be willing to listen to the problems that are brought to them and then help prioritize, because I'm sure there are more problems than they have resources or time to deal with, and really be perceived as hopefully fair and open-minded by both students and parents and also the staff in their building.
Very good. And Carrie, I'll repeat this. Discuss your view of school administration. What role do they play, and how do you think they contribute to an education?
Well, I think, Heather, you offered a great summation. I do think that our administrators are the leaders of the climate and set that tone. They do also help develop the curriculum and make those choices. And really, their role is supporting teachers and making sure that their main concern is academics, and they can focus on that and don't have other issues clouding their way.
Terrific. Our next question is, I think, pretty thought-provoking and something that will be of interest to all the viewers. Carrie, you'll start. The question is, in your opinion, what are the strengths and challenges that will keep our students educationally competitive, both here in Hudson and abroad?
I think to continually challenge them and present multiple opportunities. We've got a great K through 12 program in place. It'll be strengthened even more next year by implementing the 4K program to, you know, get an earlier start. I think continually looking at choices that we can bring in for curriculum in a global setting, and we offer kids trips to go abroad, to go domestically travel. I completely just lost my train of thought, so apologies, but I think we're not also content just to sit at where we are, but continually trying to push forward.
Terrific. Thank you, Heather.
It's hard to list the strengths of our district, because we have a really strong district. We have talented and dedicated staff. We have excellence, really, in what I've heard to refer to as the four As, so in academics, athletics, arts, and other activities. I had a chance at the school board meeting last week to see the winter sports teams recognized, and it was, it was just great to see those student athletes get up, and they really are student athletes in our district, and that was impressive. We have diverse and innovative programs. I think our academies, our STEM academy and our healthcare academy at the high school are good examples of the work we're doing. We have strong partnerships in the community. When I think about challenges, I guess two things come to mind. Attracting and retaining great staff is going to be increasingly a challenge. There's been news in the media this week about challenges with teacher shortages. And then the other challenge, I think, is that preparing students to be part of the 21st century workforce, I think we have to be careful about not stigmatizing students who don't choose to go on to four-year programs. We have great technical colleges in our region, we have lots of jobs in that area. We are doing our kids a disservice if we don't support and present that as a good choice for our students.
Well, thanks. I'm a technical school graduate myself, and a lot of us own businesses, so... Carrie, anything to add?
No, that's a great point, and they actually have, the high school has been taking steps just in the last year or two, to promote a two-year degree in technical trade schools. So, very positive.
Yeah, very good. Thanks very much. Our next two questions have to deal with curriculum, and we'll start with Heather. Heather, what are your thoughts on the concept and the implementation of Common Core?
So, I will be honest, until maybe three months ago, I probably wouldn't have been able to answer this question about Common Core. I have done some reading about Common Core, and my understanding is that Common Core was an initiative that actually came out of the states and was adopted by more and more states and then looked at at a national level. It really presents a standard for what is taught, what subjects are taught at schools, at what grade level, not how they are taught. So, local schools still have control over curriculum, control over instructional methods. The idea, as one administrator explained it to me, is that, think, Heather, if you would move your daughter, I have a fifth grader this year, to another city, and if, as she moved into that city, that fifth grade was doing what she did in fourth grade, that's what we're trying to get around. Having some standards that kids are at the same level, learning the same topics, even if they're learning them different ways. I think that would be a benefit for all of our students to have some standards while still leaving control to the local districts around how that's taught.
Very good. Heather, Carrie, how about you? Concept of Common Core?
Well, I would agree with all of that. It is a very controversial topic. I know when it was first proposed that it be adopted, I believe there were financial incentives in place for the timing of that, that the funding was tied to how quickly states adopted it. So, I think it certainly has been a skewed perception. I do think the concept behind it is very good. I don't know that the current administration will keep it in place. It's not like they can abandon it, they can't strike it, because it is the individual states that have adopted it, and it is local school boards that are setting the curriculum. But it is a very controversial topic that I don't know that I'm strongly for or against.
Okay, thank you very much. Following up in curriculum again, could you please provide, and we'll start with Carrie here, could you please provide your opinion on what the Hudson School District provides for essential general classes, elective classes, and also advanced APUSH-type classes?
I think they're very well-balanced. They offer, obviously, all the basics they used to offer in RICH, they no longer do that, they've gone strictly to advanced placement classes in which a student can test at the end of the year to see about getting college credit. And I know the trade classes, the wood shop, metal shop, are there as well. Music is offered, arts are offered. I think it is very well-balanced. They've got language, so...
Terrific. Heather, it's a little bit of a long question, I'll repeat it. Could you please provide your opinion on what the Hudson School District provides for essential general classes, electives, and also the advanced placement or APUSH-type classes?
I would agree with Carrie. As a parent of an eighth grader, I just went through the long course book getting ready to enroll in ninth grade, and there are a lot of choices for kids. In fact, I think my son probably didn't wish this, but as a parent, I found myself wishing that perhaps there were a few more hours in the day, because we offer a lot of choices in many different avenues. So, I think we're doing a good job. I am hearing from parents again and again that they're really happy with K through 12, the instruction their kids are getting, the support from teachers, and the options that their kids have. So, that's a strength that we need to continue to support.
Terrific. Our next question has to do with facilities, and Heather, we'll start with you. Can you offer your opinion on the Hudson School District renovation plans, which are now moving forward, specifically with regard to how the renovations will accommodate the student population now and into the future?
So, overwhelmingly, the referendum passed. We had two-thirds of our citizens who voted in support of the referendum. That does mean a third did not. I think a lot of those folks didn't oppose the idea of creating more space, they just weren't in love with this plan. So, that said, the referendum is providing needed space at the middle school and at the high school. I think that, you know, we're going to be fine for space in the short term. I think there are some unknowns around the population of our district with the Stillwater Bridge coming in, with industrial growth and families coming in to work at those businesses. It's something that I know, just in the past few months, attending board meetings, the board is constantly looking at enrollment numbers and enrollment projections. So, I think that there's excitement around those buildings, and we're all looking forward to getting into them, into the middle school this fall and the stadium, and then the high school the following year.
Thanks, Heather. I'll repeat the question, because it's a bit of a long one for Carrie. Can you offer your opinion on the Hudson School District renovation plans, which are moving forward, specifically with regard to how the renovation will accommodate the student population now and into the future?
Yes, I think the plan is very good. As Heather said, we don't know exactly what the numbers will be 10 to 15 years from now. Even next year, with the middle school complete, we won't have space for open enrollment at seventh grade. So, even after this addition, the school will be closed. The district isn't offering space for seventh graders to come into the town. I think at the high school, we are well-positioned for a few years. We have smaller numbers right now in the elementary school, so it'll be 15 years from now that we're looking at, did we guess correctly, and build a right-sized school. Right-sized addition, sorry.
That's okay. Thanks very much. Our final question for the forum tonight has to do with finance. Carrie will start by answering this question, and Carrie, the question is, if state funding to the school district was reduced, how would you go about addressing the budget shortfall without sacrificing the quality and education for our students?
Well, I believe right now, our staff... Well, I believe right now, our staffing administratively and teacher, teachers district-wide is very lean. We are in a unique position in the state with our fund balance, and we are under-levered quite a bit compared to most other districts in the state. Unfortunately, that would, that means we have, we have room to tax our citizens more highly, but that is certainly not the intent or the desire of the school board or administration to do that. Having to do that with the recent referendum, it would, it would obviously put us in a bad position to have that decision made from the state, but that is something we would have to seriously look at.
Very good. Thank you. Heather, would you like me to repeat the question?
Please, yep.
If state funding to the school district was reduced, how would you go about addressing the budget shortfall without sacrificing quality in the education for our students?
Now, that's a tough question, because I'll be honest, my immediate response is, something's got to give. I mean, if you don't spend as much money, something's got to give. That conversation about what that something is would have to be a conversation we had with stakeholders in the community, with community members. I could see a process almost similar to the engagement process around the referendum. You know, there are strong athletic supporters, there are strong arts supporters, there are strong supporters of the AP offerings that we have, of the vocational ed programs that we have. So, that would be a challenging position to be in. I do think one thing to look at would be the extent to which we partner with businesses and other nonprofit organizations in our community. We do some of that already, but we have really strong, we're not the only organization serving parents and kids in our community. And so, to figure out if there are ways we could achieve some cost savings by collaborating with them on meeting the needs of some of our students, I guess, would be something I'd want to look into.
All right. Terrific. Well, we thank you for your very thoughtful answers tonight. We'd now like to close by offering each of you two minutes to provide closing remarks for our viewers, and we will start with Heather.
Great. So, I believe that investing in education, investing in our kids, is one of the best investments that a community can make. I also believe that we need to be good stewards of those taxpayer dollars. We need to invest in programs and services that get results. We need school board members who are going to do their work with an open mind, with a willingness to listen, and who are going to remember that, yes, our schools are here to serve our students, but we rely on and must be responsible to the taxpayers who are supporting the district. I've spent a lot of time over the past couple of months talking with voters in our district. They talked with a lot of pride about the strength of our schools, the academics, the arts, the athletics. They're excited about the referendum. And I will also say that there were some concerns raised about other issues. Space was a big issue, but there are some other issues. Folks raised concerns about the rising number of kiddos in our district who are dealing with mental health issues, kids who are coming to school hungry or homeless or dealing with really challenging home environments. Parents are concerned about technology and the way that the district and parents work to help our students use technology well and use it safely. If we want to continue being a top-rated district, we're going to have to, we're going to have to address these issues. We have an excellent district. We have talented, dedicated staff. We have engaged families. We have support of the community, and that's important because we can't do this work alone. I really believe that my background and experience working to bring people together around some tough community challenges will help our board lead our district through the challenges that we face, continuing to ensure that we provide all of our students with an environment where they can learn and thrive and grow and develop the skills that they're going to need to be successful, productive, contributing members of our society. As a candidate for a school board, I commit to putting in the time and energy to do that job well. I would be honored to serve on the school board, and I hope I will have your vote on April 4th.
Thanks very much, Heather. Now, Carrie, for your closing remarks.
Well, I'd like to echo that I am very appreciative to have had this opportunity for the last three years to serve on the board, and I would be most grateful to have the opportunity to serve the students, teachers, and citizens of the Hudson community once again. Thank you.
Thanks very much. On behalf of the River Channel, I want to thank Carrie Whitaker for being here, as well as Heather Logelin tonight. I also would like to thank Marion Shaw. All three candidates deserve our appreciation for the time and effort that they may expend on behalf of others in our school district and for our students. We most certainly thank all three candidates for their interest in serving our students, our schools, and our district here in Hudson. And finally, thank you, viewers, for joining us tonight. Have a great night. Goodbye.
Great. Thanks, John.